Call the meeting of county council order, please rise, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree in justice wrong.
Optional prayer or invocation, Mrs. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let us pray. As we gather today, let us remember our responsibilities, and may we not be distracted by the world around us. We desire to be attentive to our work and listen. We don't want to be divided. God, may our priorities become clear, our vision be focused. Give us the strength and courage to live with open eyes and ready minds. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika? Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Before we get to the hearing of the public, are you students from a local school?
Dana.
Dana, welcome. Hopefully you'll learn something today, or be enlightened somehow, anyway. Hearing of the public, anybody that called in ahead of time will have five minutes, anybody thereafter wishing to speak will have three. I don't see Mr. Barnes with us today, so if he comes in before we finish, we'll give him his chance. Anybody from the public wish to be heard tonight? Moving on, now do I have a motion to-
Move to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Moved by Mr. Leon as her second, seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Reports of county officials, county executive and/or her designee, Mr. Farman, thank you. Finance committee, Mrs. Fatika is not with us tonight, so does she designate anybody to give the report?
I'm second to mine, so I can do that for you. Okay, last Thursday we had a meeting, and it was decided to put on the agenda for a first reading A through E, and those are the ordinances. And then possible adoption of resolutions would be F through I, and appointments to Human Relations, Housing Authority, Library Board, and Human Relations Commission would be J through M, and then N would be possible sale of parcels of them in the repository. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. There was no action in the Personnel Committee, so we won't have a report there. Reports of other members of council, Mr. Horton.
Good evening, council. I come to you again embarrassed, more or less, saddened by, necessarily I have to report that it's been 147 days since the 24 Wall Street USA Today article has been published declaring Erie, Pennsylvania, the worst city in America for black people to live. And the deafening silence is shameful. I'm embarrassed because I haven't put forth any legislation that would lead to, you know, that declaration being turned around. I'm embarrassed because here we are in the seat, at the county seat, where human services are supposed to be our first mission, and we haven't put anything forward collectively. I'm embarrassed because the county executive hasn't. I'm embarrassed because Mayor Schimber hasn't, City Councilwoman Arrington, Mr. Wenarsky, Mr. Wetherspoon, Ms. Allen, and the entire city council hasn't, our state delegation hasn't, Representative Bizarro, Representative Fabrizio, Representative Harkins, Representative Rowe, Representative Sonny hasn't, Senator Loflin hasn't, Governor Wolfen, all the gubernatorial candidates on both sides of the aisle haven't. Yet we pick up the paper, and I see they want to put a precinct in Erie High to put cops with kids. I'm on the board of directors of Powell, I support that. Powell's already in the building. I like Matt Harris's character program, they're in the building. Erie School District has their own police force, they're in the building. The probation officers are in and out of the building all day, they're in the building. Why do we need city Erie police to have an office or precinct in the building? They're not in Collegiate, they're not in Iroquois, they're not in McDowell, and it starts to paint a narrative. So I met this past week with the chamber president, I asked not to demonize anyone, but that we could do, see if we could perhaps do voluntary reporting as to what the workforce looks like, through their 800-member organization. Because once again, I think a startling contrast will start to emerge. It's one that we've discussed here before at the county, of the 16 of the 100 employees, the abysmal number of people of color who are employed, even more abysmal in management. We've talked about the city's lack of employment for people of color. We've talked about it at the school district, where 65% of the kids are people of color and less than 2% of the employees. I believe some, well, it used to be, and I don't know what it's like now, that they're all jammed into one building, but the silence is deafening. Yet every time I look up, there's something to do, another extension of law enforcement. And so, it's been 147 days. I'll come back next month, and we'll do, sadly, it's an election year, so every candidate for every office, whether it be congressional, whether it be the gubernatorial, the state or any local level, poor people, in light of what's going on right here in the 16501 zip code, that's a whole nother dynamic, poor people, somebody ought to say something. So I don't want to leave out, and I'll get up off my high horse, but I don't want to leave out the community of faith, or the nonprofit sector, or the boards and authorities either. The community of faith, whether it's the African-American Concerned Clergy, haven't done anything. Whether it's Catholic Church and Bishop Persico, you haven't done anything. The Jewish synagogue, the Tippewah, she hasn't, haven't done anything. Muslim Imam, haven't done anything. And if no, you know, around here, we shoot the messenger. So I don't want to demonize anybody, nor do I wish to be demonized, but if I don't come and say these things, who says them? Because there's been no one who's sat here to look like me in the 200-plus-year history of the county. So I implore you, as we do the Erie refocus and we all walk forward together, speaking with one voice and with one vision, don't leave the poor people behind, don't leave the people of color behind. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Anderson?
Chairman Faust and fellow members of council, I want to report on several activities that I have been involved in and combine them together in one report. And I want to thank Councilman Horton, working together with me, calling an election board meeting last week, and all the other members of council who attended that meeting. There are some issues that have come forward to the public. I have talked at length with members of council, and council members certainly are aware and understand the issues that we face potentially moving forward with our voting systems. I want to thank our clerk, Doug Smith, for the knowledge that he has, and his staff for the ability that they've shown, and the professionalism that they have when it comes to ensuring that our elections are safe. So I'm not giving this report in any way by saying that anybody in our community should lack confidence in the election process and in our equipment, but more importantly, moving forward, we know that our equipment has a certain lifespan, and it is coming to the end of its useful life. And so I want to make sure that not only this council and the administration are proactive, but that the community at large knows that, moving forward, our community is going to have to undertake planning and being proactive, and at some point, we're going to undertake very expensive propositions to replace our voting machines. All of this has been brought forward by Governor Wolf's recent mandate for paper trail on new voting machines. With all of that said, I was able to attend the CCAP State Conference. The number-one issue being discussed at CCAP was the issue with voting machines and how we're going to move forward. The community should know that we are mandated by the election code to follow the state election code and what the state brings forward. For the new voting machines, the state has only verified one voting system, and so that is the only system under a new mandate right now that could possibly be used. Unfortunately, the only funds that have been brought forward with this unfunded mandate are the leftover have-a funds from the Congress. Now, there is a bill in Congress, Bill 394, that's being moved through to help offset additional costs. In some of the reports that were given, it's anticipated that there's roughly about $365 million that is still in reserve under the have-a act. Pennsylvania's share would be about $17 million, so dividing that between 67 counties, Erie County's share would be, you know, somewhere just south of $1 million. New voting system for Erie County is estimated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 to $15 million. The potential for new funding being brought through this bill in Congress may include additional $3 million in that neighborhood to our local county, which could potentially leave us with a shortfall of roughly $10 million. There's been other issues that have recently come up with this council, where we've talked about the state now pushing back to us mandates that are unfunded. And we need to make sure that, and I know that my fellow colleagues will be certain that will make sure, that Erie County gets its fair share of any dollars available, and that we search for those fair share of dollars. And I hope, at some point down the road, that we put forth a resolution to the state, to the governor, and perhaps to CCAP, asking them to ensure that every avenue that they explore, that these unfunded mandates that are brought down, that they look for the funds to assist the counties in making sure that we're not just passing all of that along to the local taxpayer. I would hope at some point that we put together a task force to begin to work on this. I see this as a three-to-five-year window before the voting machines have to be replaced, and I just hope that we stay proactive with this, and we want to, I want to bring this forward, to be honest, to the public, to let them know that what we're talking about and what we're looking for is not because there's any lack of confidence or any breach in our voting machines or equipment, but that they're coming to the end of their useful life, and therefore, we need to prepare for the future and the next generation of voting equipment. I also would like to report that within the several committees that were happening down at CCAP, I was very proud to be a member of the delegation from Erie County. County Executive Doll Camper was there as well, we were very busy with several meetings, but I'd like to report that two of the names most spoken at CCAP were former Councilman Joe Giles and present Councilman Fiore Leon. Both of those members of Erie County have made a significant impact with CCAP on behalf of Erie County residents, and I would also like to report that a longstanding issue that Councilman Leon has been working on, he calls it the no-fault absentee ballot. CCAP is calling it the no-excuse absentee ballot, but that is being moved forward to the state legislature for potential adoption, and I would like to congratulate Councilman Leon on his work on that, on behalf of the citizens of not only Erie County, but the state of Pennsylvania. I have been asked to serve on the Election Committee of CCAP to begin their work on the issue that I previously brought up, as far as the voting systems are concerned across Pennsylvania. And I should also like to report as a historian that a history of CCAP was put together, this year is their 133rd year, and Erie County has had eight statewide presidents of CCAP. So with that said, we've been well represented. With that said, that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else? Okay, there is no old business, and before we move to new business, just for the guests in the audience that haven't been here before, all the ordinances that we have generally require two readings, unless we vote to move them ahead, just in the issue of timelessness to take advantage of whatever may happen to be in front of us, and you'll see some of that tonight. All the resolutions or other appointments to boards and so forth just need one vote, so you will see that difference as we go forward. So with that, is there a motion to-
So move, Mr. Chairman, to consider the ordinance number 23 as a second reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton to amend our agenda tonight to have ordinance number 22 a second reading. Is there any comment regarding that or concern? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the motion, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
So with that, we'll have a second reading of ordinance number 22, please, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 22, 2018, 2018 general fund budget waiver of county purchasing code for renewal of three-year West Library Maintenance Agreement for County Law Library and Court Library.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Law and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 22, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
First reading of ordinance number 23, please, in title only. And just to actually amplify what I said earlier, these will not be voted on tonight. If they remain at first readings, they'll be voted on at our next meeting.
A first reading of ordinance number 23, 2018, third 2018 public health fund budget, revised revenue and expenditures of $143,026, and supplemental appropriation of $98,930 from a reduction in Act 12 funding.
And as most of you have seen, the screen will tell you a little bit more detail as to what is being considered in front of us. First reading of ordinance number 24, please, in title only.
A first reading of ordinance number 24, 2018, 12th 2018 general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $72,788 for a reduction in Act 12 funding.
First reading of ordinance number 25, please, in title only.
First reading of ordinance number 25, 2018, fourth 2018 public health fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $128,272 in additional tobacco grant revenue.
First reading of ordinance number 26, please, in title only.
A first reading of ordinance number 26, 2018, 2018 revised environmental fee schedule in the Erie County Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Before we go on, I think I mentioned this in the caucus, and I'm going to mention it again. Do I think this is a necessary issue, those of the last four ordinance that were said or were read? I do. It's very, you know, it's very essential for the health and welfare of the citizens in Erie County. But this is a mandated issue from the state of Pennsylvania. We continue to be short-funded when you're talking about the mandate that we have in environmental health. And in doing that, that means that this council, like I said, do I believe it's essential? Yes, I do. I may not vote for it, but I do believe it's very essential. And what I'm looking at is the fact that by voting for this, we've taken the responsibility of legislators that we have in Erie County and throughout the state, really, and we've said to them, you don't have to do anything, you don't have to send us that money, we'll put the money in, even though you don't send it to us. And that, to me, is very unfortunate. I think we have to do a heck of a lot more. I believe Mr. Anderson mentioned that, as far as unfunded mandates are concerned. We've been complaining about that through CCAP for many, many years. Is it going to change? I don't know. I couldn't tell you, because I don't believe that we have the year of the legislators in the state. And that's extremely unfortunate, because this isn't the only area that we're talking about. There's many areas you're going to find, I'm sure in the human services area, going to find cuts this coming year, as they have been in the past, and will continue to be in the future. It's unfortunate that we have to say, let's say, we're taking the legislators off the hook by doing the funding that they should be doing in Harrisburg. I don't have any more comments, I just wanted everybody to know. But again, I want them to, every member of this council to understand, this is very essential. I'm not saying vote against it, I may vote against it, but I'm saying that it has to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Mr. Smith, possible adoption of resolution number 21, please, in title only.
Resolution number 21 of 2018, approving the appointment of deputy tax collector in Waterford Township.
Move some water.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Law, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion regarding that appointment? This is something that council has to do when they name a new tax collector or deputy tax collector for that matter, so. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 21, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 22, please, in title only.
Resolution number 22 of 2018, exonerating all outstanding taxes, penalties, interest, and fees on four properties owned by the municipal authority of the borough of Union City.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Law and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 22, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 23, please, in title only.
Resolution number 23 of 2018, in support of Erie County government establishing a day reporting center in Erie County.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In regards to the resolution supporting the day reporting center, I would like to say a little bit about the help that will be for offenders and the taxpayers of Erie County. I have always been supporting of the idea that we have a day reporting center. There have been several meetings discussing a day reporting center. At one of these meetings, there was a question asked that says it all. The question was, what are the possible problems with the day reporting center? The answer is, there are none. The first, at first, the best description of the day reporting center is that it is a one-stop shop. There will be access to treatment and services, reintegration and reentry to the society and rehabilitation. The offender will be able to go to one location to get all the services needed, instead of several locations, to get the person back into society and to be a productive member of society. It will be a benefit to the offender, because there will be no more cost to them, and most probably, a savings. It will be a positive impact on the lives of the offenders with proactive schedule and regiment. Instead of wearing an ankle monitor, they can attend the day reporting center. The ankle monitor does not educate or rehabilitate. Where the center, they will be receiving employment assistance, GED preparation, adult education, and the person's attitude and emotional feelings also will be taken into consideration. There also will be available anger management, batter's intervention, cooperative behavioral therapy, drug and alcohol testing and services, mental health and behavioral health services, along with the community service opportunities. This will give the people in the prison the opportunity to get early parole by agreeing to attend the scheduled sessions. Also, the judges will have a sentencing option in lieu of incarceration as a court order special condition. The benefit to the taxpayers of Erie County will be a reduction in cost of services. A very conservative number at this time is $217,175 of savings per year in the county budget, with no cut in services. The rehabilitated offenders will not be returning to prison, which at this time, other counties have reported as much as 73%, reported by Franklin County from 2006. These people have become part of society and do not return to prison. The service will be offered to all qualified offenders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Anybody else? Mr. Horton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank my colleague, Ms. Law, for all the hard diligent work that she's done in getting that, this resolution to this point. I can remember when I first came on council, I had the opportunity, along with Ms. Law and the county executive, to visit a day reporting center. And, you know, it was the first time that I really heard anything about it, and it sounded really, really good, went on closer review. I didn't, it all comes back to return on investment, and it, right now, I get that it costs us 40 grand a year upwards to incarcerate each prisoner, and I also understand that right now, we offer, the county has all those services offered to every citizen, all 280,000 citizens in the county. I also know that, you know, the courts often mandate offenders, nonviolent offenders, to anger management as it is already, or to go to mental health, or oftentimes drug and alcohol, whether it's in the form of ARD, or just someone who's caught up in a world of addiction, particularly with the opiate crisis now, we do the warm handoff. So we offer all of those services here at the county right now. So my question was, are you going to assess the client the fee? And it was no, the client isn't going to pay anything. And so I was like, okay, well, who pays for it? And so about 25 years ago, I did some more research, and I found out that Mercy-Hurcific Institute did a study on prison overcrowding. We were in a bad way here, and we were paying, you know, for overcrowded prison, and they came up with the ankle monitor, and of course, there was a fee attached to that. Some of the other centers that I looked at- Some of the other centers that I looked at, they charged them for urinalysis, they charged them for just about every service that they received there. And so again, I asked, well, if the client isn't going to pay for it, who pays for it? And so, you know, looking, delving closer, you know, illuminating it even further, I start looking at the prison itself and the fees and what happens with the prisoner after he's sentenced and what he does with his time and how we pay for things. And, you know, in August of my first year of joining this body in my first term, we, this body adopted or passed an ordinance that would, basically, we require an inmate, an adult inmate, to pay 75 percent of their commissary charges. And that means like if your son or my daughter is incarcerated and we charge him $10 a day and he's got nine months to do at the county, we charge him that, we charge him every pill he takes, we charge him haircuts, we, you know, we charge him, I mean, we assess some fees for DUI, every trip to the hospital or whatever, county costs, county restitution. And so theoretically, you can do your time, you can do your nine months and be a perfect citizen, but you have fines now and that gives you the privilege of being on probation at $30 a month. Again, the 147 days. So what does that do? And I think we know what the population looks like at the county prison. So what does that do? You get out, you're convicted felon, you're unemployed, yet you're being assessed $30 a month just to be on probation. That means that your life is living, you know what? Because probation officer has more power over you than the police department in that wherever you call your domicile, you know, your home with your spouse and your children or your boo or your baby's mama or your children, if you're cohabitating with them, they can come in, they don't need probable cause. They can just walk right in, hey, how you doing? If you're walking down the street with your family, they can, hey, come here, Jim. Hey, how you doing, Mrs. Jim? Hey, you want to empty your pockets, put your hands on them. Yeah. And so now we do pre-release center. We figured out, we can't lock them all up. We want to do something for the nonviolent offender. Still locking up people for marijuana, yet we're letting people sell marijuana legally now. Those people are going to be, those are candidates for day reporting center. We violate people. Here's how you get to day reporting center if you're already in there. Dirty urine, don't show up for an appointment, she calls down there and says, you know, you got a PFA on you, all nonviolent stuff. And really, the remedy isn't, isn't that we need another system to keep them under thumb. The remedy is stop locking people and stop over-arresting people. Because, you know, again, the demographics is poor people and people of color. This stuff don't affect rich people in the same manner that it affects people from those communities. 75 percent. When you go and you look and you see grandfather isn't working, the son isn't working, the uncle isn't working, the mother isn't working. And when you see we're at 16501, the poor zip code in the Commonwealth, something's wrong. And law enforcement ain't going to fix it. A day reporting center ain't going to fix it. And so I'll be, not to demonize anyone, but who pays for it at the end of the day? It doesn't pay for itself. I liken it to the 911 center, it's going to be a big money pit. At some point, it's going to hit general fund or gaming revenue. Who pays for it? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I just want to thank, in particular, Councilwoman Kathy Fatika and, most importantly, Councilwoman Carol Law for the efforts that they've put in on this project, the time that they've put forward on behalf of the citizens of Erie County. They should be commended for the work that they've done. I applaud the two of you on behalf of the citizens of Erie County for the work that you've done. I think this proactive approach to begin somewhere to move our community forward in a positive fashion to help reshape the lives of people that have already been brought into the system is a collaborative effort, not only on behalf of the elected officials, but the staff of Erie County, the law enforcement. All venues from Erie County have been supportive of this project. It couldn't move forward without the hard work of all of you collaborating together. And I, once again, just applaud you for the work that you've done and will support your resolution tonight.
Anybody else? Mr. Smith, roll call on resolution number 24.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was resolution 23. Thank you, Mr. Leone. I apologize for that. Okay, so that resolution passes. Next is possible adoption of resolution number 24, please, entitled only.
Resolution number 24 of 2018, appointment of auditors to perform an audit of the Erie County Health Choices Program for the fiscal year of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone and second by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? I think we had four people put proposals to the county. This was the lowest bid, so they've done business with the county before, so any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 24, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leone.
I'd like to make a motion to make the next four appointments in one motion, the possible adoption of Dr. Mary Jo Campbell to the Human Relations Advisory Board, possible appointment of Dale Robertson to the Erie County Housing Authority, and possible appointment of Felix Lojitea to the Erie County Library Board, hope I pronounced that correctly, and possible appointment of Camille Crenshaw to the Human Relations Commission Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Leone and second by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion regarding those four appointments? I only know, I know Dr. Mary Jo Campbell and Camille Crenshaw pretty well, so I know by just speaking on their behalf, I look forward to their appointments being approved. They're both going to be excellent additions to the Human Relations Advisory Board. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on those four appointments.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leone.
Move for the possible sale of parcel from the repository for unsold property at the index number listed on our agenda.
Moved by Mr. Leone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion regarding that sale? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the sale of parcel, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Adjourned.
Council stands adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for attending.